Hi, everyone. Craig Radau is my name. I am Public Safety Chair for the Studio City Neighborhood Council and I am a board member. So, the main purpose of the Neighborhood Council and the Studio City Neighborhood Council is we serve as a bridge between the community and higher elected officials. We make recommendations and advise our councilmen, the mayor, the city council on a wide variety of concerning issues. The -- I think we -- okay. This Public Safety Committee, we focus mostly on the areas of crime, local law enforcement, disaster preparedness, and general public safety issues that affect Studio City. Plus, we work with the Transportation Committee on traffic-related public safety issues. I'm appointed by the president, and we just have a new president of the Studio City Neighborhood Council Board, Patrick Lewis. He will begin his term at this coming -- at the June meeting. And to sit on the Public Safety Committee, you don't necessarily have to be a Studio City Neighborhood Council Board member. So, I encourage you to get involved and join us at this committee meetings or others. And the Public Safety Committee is also lucky to have another layer of advisors and support from CPAB, which is the Community Police Advisory Board, who join us at many meetings. Ron Drescher heads that, and he's here this evening. We'll get into CPAB in a little bit, and you'll address everyone. And also Patty Kirby sits on CPAB as well. Let me read the motion as it stands now, and then we'll open up to the comments. In regards to City Council motion -- let me back up for one second, I'm sorry. What's going to happen with this process right now? So, this motion starts in committee. We will vote on it tonight. If it passes, it will move on to the full Studio City Neighborhood Council Board in June's meeting. If that passes, then it will be submitted as a community impact statement that will be sent to, of course, Councilman Krikorian, the full city council, and we send it to the mayor, and that's where we provide our advisement. This motion right here, it could be tweaked. You can make suggestions tonight if we want to change the words, but ultimately, we'll decide on the final motion as we want to present it. Okay. So, in regards to City Council motion number 180357, presented by Councilman Paul Krikorian, "The Studio City Neighborhood Council is strongly opposed to any review, assessment, and/or development of the properties located at 11220 Ventura Boulevard and 12225 Ventura Boulevard in regards to providing temporary or permanent homeless shelter, storage facility, and/or parking. We are facing a homeless epidemic in Los Angeles, and we strongly recommend finding appropriate shelter and mental health locations in less residentially populated and local business-driven neighborhoods." We'll open it up to comments, and we'll start with Joshua Steele.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Joshua Steele. I've lived in Studio City for most of my life, and I'm speaking regarding Agenda Item 6 because I believe that homelessness is a crisis across the LA area, and the only way to address this crisis is to provide services, shelter, and housing for the homeless in every neighborhood. Claiming that the two sites in question on Ventura Boulevard are too close to homes and businesses is not an excuse. We're a densely populated city, and we have a moral obligation to support the homeless. And furthermore, I believe that upper-middle-class and wealthy neighborhoods like Studio City don't get to opt out of providing housing and services to the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Kenny.
Should I stand, sit?
Please, sit.
Relax. Thanks. Hi, my name is Mary Kenny. I am a Studio City resident, a full-time self-employed resident. In my free time, I run a small nonprofit that encourages Angelenos to volunteer. So, I have personally worked with LA Family Housing and Downtown Women's Center and seen the amazing work that they're doing here in the Valley. I strongly support providing housing services to people experiencing homelessness. They are people experiencing homelessness, not just homeless people. So, they're our neighbors. Thank you very much.
Catherine.
I've been living in Studio City for 34 years. I examined on the map where the proposed locations are, and -- there's the handouts There are some that are much larger. Some are just a little strip of land that I don't think should be used for storage facility without oversight. I think the -- everything should be contained on one site. Having storages or shower facilities or safe parking without service providers just will increase our problem. They need to be -- people need to be housed, and they need to be -- they need to get their documents in order, they need to get everything sorted out before they can go on to the next step, which is their permanent supportive housing or housing of some sort. So, that's what I see, that we shouldn't have separate storage facilities here, a navigation center there, safe parking over here, that it has to be contained in one area.
Thank you, Catherine.
Okay.
Thank you. Irina Lefkowitz -- Lefkowitz?
Hi, my name is Irina Lefkowitz, and I lived in Studio City since 1990, and I never felt less safe than I feel now. I used to walk my dog at night, and I'm no longer there because I feel that I can be attacked. I'm sure other people feel the same way. I cannot go in the evening to Walgreens to fulfill my prescription because there would be a homeless person standing there, and I could be attacked. I don't feel safe in Studio City at all. As per report of LAPD Officer Sean Smith, he encourages us to help him and let him know if there is something suspicious going on. And in general, he declares that the crime in Studio City is declining, and in my opinion, this is not true. I feel that the crime in Studio City is on a total rise, and we have only one person protecting us. This is ridiculous. I feel that the homeless people have more rights than us. I feel that they don't do their due diligence as we do as taxpayers to be on the street. First of all, who can be on the street, live on the street, shower there, do their toiletries, and expect us to pay the taxes for that? That's ridiculous. And I feel that what being proposed as a temporary shelter or the shelter on Ventura Boulevard for storage or for some other -- I think this whole thing is a show, and I feel that you guys know it as well, I do, that the plan is preordained. I feel that it will happen. And all this is just a talk, and I don't mean to sound sarcastic, but I feel like us being in this movie studio is also a show. I feel that all of us neighbors should get together and actively pursue a lawsuit against the city of Los Angeles depriving us of our right to live peacefully and enjoy our homes and don't feel afraid if, God forbid, we did not turn on our nightly alarm. And my disappointment with LA City Mayor, City Council is beyond words. And English is not even my second -- first language. It's second. But I think I share a motion of a lot of people who live around me, who live in Studio City, who can no longer take their kids on a bike ride because there will be needles around and God knows what, and they just -- homeless take over. And what rights do they have to do that? I know they need help. I'm sure that these shelters that are proposed and going to be opened will not move those drug people to the shelter. I think these people cannot be moved because they prefer to be where they are. We can easily get access to their drug suppliers, and this is going to be again paint by us. And my frustration is that I feel that this is already pre-decided.
Okay.
That's my point.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. Susan Caldwell, please.
Thank you for letting me ask some questions. Do I need to sit in a special seat?
We cannot answer questions. It's your time to make a public comment.
Oh, okay. Well, I came here predominantly for questions, so then this will be my statement of things we need to do. I am certainly not against homeless shelters being provided to the community. Clearly, there is a need. My issue that I do believe is wholly being ignored by Councilman Krikorian because he's not being transparent with the community right now is providing a plan. He needs to be providing to the community at this stage what the plan is and the resources because that's really the issue that I look to it, to the Studio City locations, is are they able to house and resource the health and the safety risks that are associated for it, not only for the community, but as well as for the homeless and the indigent that are needing services. For example, primary care. They'll need primary care. Is that in any way associated with these Studio City locations? That hasn't been answered. The answer clearly will probably be not because they need to relocate them to USC County for free care, Martin Luther King, all those are downtown LA. Who's going to be their substance abuse intervenor, which is required for anyone that understands what is required in providing homeless care? I'm very familiar with what's required. You need a primary care facility. You need case managers to check to see how you're doing. We need behavioral health checking in and seeing how you're doing. We need to see the drug intervenors to see whether or not you're doing well or you need some more help. Those resources have to be localized to where these emergency shelters, which are high capacity and are waiving the traditional rules, obviously for this Ventura Boulevard location. Those need to be answered, and of course, they haven't been. And frankly, if you look at the schematic of this -- those two locations, it's nowhere to be found. So, I came here to answer -- ask questions, and maybe it's premature, but I'd like to say that the councilmen of the city need to be providing those answers, and they also need to be providing, which I really wanted tonight, maybe it's again premature, is to know the feasibility study schedule, who it's been assigned to, and what the protocol is for community input on that. Because obviously, it implicates health for the people, health in the sidewalks, and if those resources aren't there, then obviously, the homeless are going to move beyond the shelters. They panhandle, they look for food elsewhere, they look for resources from the community. You can't blame them. But then we've been foolhardy, we haven't helped them, and we've made the community worse. So, if anything I can ask today or to put on the Neighborhood Council --
This video will be shared with -- we'll make sure the councilman's office sees the video tonight. So, if you have a question that you want to raise and point out, and that's to everyone, say it.
Then those are the questions, is who's the primary care? Who's going to be the case managers for this? Because they're set up and established in Skid Row communities, but they're not here. Where's going to be the transportation line for that? Where is going to be and who, which agencies? Literally, which agencies are going to be assigned the behavioral health for these locations? And when they say it's just a parking lot where people are living, they need behavioral health, they need primary care, they need case managers, they need substance abuse intervention. It is. So, all of those facilities and resources that allow the community to have input on a feasibility study are completely absent. They are not currently in this location. The councilmen in the city quite right now has been silent on those, which makes a feasibility study a bit of a sham until those questions are answered. And lastly, but most importantly, is what is the protocol for the feasibility study to permit community input before that study is finalized? It is not a valid feasibility study for anyone that's dealt with this and land use issues. It is not a valid feasibility study if there is not a roundtable where people have an ability to respond and report before that report is finalized, either agreeing or disagreeing with the responses of the community. But right now, that's silent, and those dates and deadlines and opportunities need to be circulated to this community. Thank you for letting me squeeze in. Thank you.
Mark Ruben.
Thanks. There's a lot of issues that I'd like to address here, but in the interest of time, I think I'm going to skip ahead to things. In general, in general, I find some of the previous commentators I'd like to speak to because I believe that they have a moral responsibility to provide me with a McLaren automobile because I want one similar to what they're advocating for this. I'll be the first person to say that Councilman Krikorian has done good things for Studio City. I've supported him with many things.
They can't hear you in the background.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Just louder.
Louder, louder.
Isn't there a mic available? There's no PA system, so everybody needs to speak up.
If you want to sit more to the side or stand over there, you could address both of us at the same time. That would be better.
Thank you. As I was saying, Councilman Krikorian has done some good things for Studio City. This one strikes me as very much a politically motivated proposal. I believe that the councilman has political aspirations, just like our previous two mayors have political aspirations. I think this will get him on the national stage. I think this -- these proposals do nothing positive for Studio City. I believe that as much as homeless people need help, I believe what's going to end up happening if these facilities are put in place, that we will continue to have several thousand people living down by the river under bridges and stuff, plus, in addition to that, 50, 100, 200 in this housing, in this temporary housing. As the previous speaker spoke, there doesn't seem to be any cogent plan to integrate these people back into society. It seems to be a permanent -- a permanent supportive -- to support this kind of, I'll say frankly, antisocial lifestyle. I believe there are plenty of programs in place to help people who are, I'll use the politically correct term, experiencing homeless, who are the people who can be helped, the people who have lost their job and have gone bankrupt, people who have been faced with huge medical bills and become insolvent, women who are the victims of abusive relationships and are running away from that. Those people can be helped, those people can be brought back into society. I believe there are programs in place to do that. What I'm addressing is the hardcore homeless, the drug addicts, the terminally mentally ill people, which is what we have in Studio City in droves. And nowhere in this discussion do I see a distinction between those -- that kind of spectrum of people. I went to the councilman's town hall on the homeless in January and just heard reams of obviously specious information. Statistics were brought forth. I feel that statistics and studies made by homeless advocates have about the same amount of credibility as medical studies done by multinational pharmaceutical companies. You know, statements have been made, including very recently here tonight. I read Nextdoor every day, much to my detriment. Statements have been made, "These people are your neighbors." Well, you know, if you want to bring out Webster's Dictionary and talk about that, I suppose the guy who breaks into your house in a home invasion robbery is a member of your family or at least your roommate because they're in your house there. I'm sure if you worked very, very hard, you could find somebody who's down by the river there. Maybe you could find somebody who is an ex-Studio City homeowner, maybe. It's often said that the homeless crisis is a side product of the housing expense in Studio City. I've run into these people. I walk by the river. I walk on the streets every day. I sincerely doubt that the people I run into are going, "Well, you know, I could have bought that house in the Silver Triangle for $900,000, but it went for 1.1, and it was just out of my price range."
Sir, we usually like to keep it two minutes. Obviously, we're going a little longer tonight, but we have a lot to go through if you want to wrap it up.
Okay, so, I will wrap it up. I'm strongly opposed to these -- this proposal. I agree with the previous speaker that this quote public process, it's been said, nothing's going to be done without public input. I believe this is on the fast track to happening, and I think that the Studio City Neighborhood Council should as strongly as possible protest this, and we as a community need to look into possibly further measures beyond that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim Biddle.
So, I wrote something up, I'm going to read it, and I'm quoting things. I'm not going to read the sources, although I have them if anyone wants them. But I was researching, this is general quotes and information relating to the 222 proposition and ordinance number 185492, which is the Permanent Supportive Housing Ordinance. The purpose, according to Jose Wezar, was to, quote, "provide homeless housing more equally throughout the city," end quote. Quote, "We've all got to do more to tackle homelessness, including building additional permanent supportive housing in our area of the city," end quote, Paul Krikorian. The 222 proposition and ordinance, quote, "allow permanent supportive housing projects to avoid reviews, processes that can drag out a year or more, and expose the projects to public battles with opponents," end quote. These laws allow homeless projects to, quote, "avoid environmental review and public hearings as long as the projects meet certain requirements," end quote. According to the AbundantHousingLA.org, a group committed to advocating for more housing, quote, "Our politicized planning system allows a few opponents to delay or veto badly needed homes. This is why the Permanent Supportive Housing Ordinance is a good law. PSH projects can proceed without needing to go through an environmental review process, require approval from the City Planning Commission and City Council, or face legal challenges and delays under CEQA." And, quote, "Instead of a politicized process where people who already have homes can go to meetings and try to stop new dwellings for the homeless, the PSH ordinance requires common sense standards for design and construction," end quote. I would like to contrast this with a statement by Paul Krikorian on Nextdoor where he says, quote, "Rest assured, no decision will be made without an opportunity for the public to be heard," end quote. "Just to be clear, this motion only asks for a feasibility study on city-owned properties and nothing more," end quote. "I urge you to withhold judgment at this early stage." At best, that's misinformation, and at worst, it's completely deceptive. I also want to note that they're talking about that this is a citywide issue that must be geographical equity in where services and shelters are placed. According to the study by LA, I can cite the study, Studio City has 2.1% of the homeless. Why does this call for geographical equity? According to Councilmember Harris Dawson, ensuring, quote, "Geographic equity would ease pressure on council members." Quote, "I think all of us would get a lot of relief if our constituents could pick up the paper and say, 'Oh, this is happening everywhere,'" as opposed to, quote, "Why here?" Compare this statement to Krikorian. Quote, "We will be providing the people who are already living in the area with secure and monitored shelter, not inviting others in," end quote. There's no language to that effect in the ordinance passed by the city council. I also want to note, as of the last meeting that I attended, only two council members had offered up any such sites. The first was Koreatown, Herb Wesson, and Krikorian. So, when he says there will, quote, "be similar temporary shelters built in all 15 city council districts across the city," he gives no evidence for this. And again, they aren't temporary, they're permanent. So, my questions to him, which I was hoping he would show up or his assistant Jessica would show up at, you know, a meeting like this, are, so are these sites different than the 222 pledge? And will they have relaxed limitations on height and density, reduced or no parking requirements? Will these be regulated under the California Environmental Quality Act or any sort of environmental review? And I have a question as to why are the existing laws prohibiting the following behavior not enforced at all? Camping on the street, defecating and urinating in public, drinking alcohol and doing drugs in public, littering and panhandling? That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, copy.
After hearing all this, it's very hard to listen to. I've been a resident of Studio City for 28 years, and I'd say in the past three, I have seen homeless people in Studio City more and more and more. This was a lovely little burg of a town. People would call it the gem of the valley. And when I heard what was going on, and I got into this late, but I saw it on Nextdoor, thank you social media, I don't understand why this has not been publicized, really publicized. And I don't understand where's all the paperwork for us to read? Why aren't we voting on this? I don't understand. I want to fight this to the end. I want to be a part of that. I appreciate that you may vote it down, and we'll see what happens, but where's it going to go from there? I also concur with those that went before me that said this is a done deal. In these times of politics, this is a political decision being made very, very quickly, as evidenced in the proposal that was just read, that the normal real estate regulations that any new shelter or building should be gone through are going to be put aside so we can rush into this. Well, no, Studio City does not want to rush into this. Studio City might take our turn way down the line, but we're not starting here. We're not going to be the guinea pigs for this. And I mean, I hope I speak for some others in the room, if we have to take this legally, we will. We shouldn't have to. This is still a democracy.
Thanks, Greg. I'm talking as a member, resident of Studio City. I am on the Board of Police Commission and also co-chair of CPAB, but I'm not talking as a police official. The homeless problem is ubiquitous. Some quick statistics, California has 12%, approximately 12% of the population, and 25% of the homeless. LA City, not county, LA City, has 10% of the population. We have about 4 million, and there's 40 million in the state, so we have about 10% of the population and 30% of the homeless. This is not my quote, but this is a quote from the council members, that about 2/3 of the homeless are mentally ill, many of them on drugs or alcohol issues. I've spoken to many people from the Department of Mental Health. They estimate 80% of the homeless have mental issues. The problem, now just from a crime standpoint, around any homeless encampment, there's a huge increase in Part I crime. Part I crime is both property crime, breaking in your homes, breaking in your cars, and also violent crimes, crimes against people. And there's, and I could quote statistics, but I know we're -- we have some time pressures, but there's a huge increase around homeless encampments. The problem isn't the police cannot police the way out of homeless. There's really no enforcement. They collect, they see somebody breaking in your car, and they'll be out in one day. Why? Because jails are overcrowded. It was mandated by the Supreme Court to reduce the amount of population in the prisons. We had 175,000 people in the prisons, and we're down about 100,000. We had 175,000 people in the prisons, and we're down about 135, and we can't just bring them back up. So they feel impotent, they can't enforce the laws, and we have AB, I think it's 109, Proposition 4757, which reduces many of the crimes from felonies to misdemeanors, drug possession, and if you steal under $950, it's a misdemeanor. And they'll be out within a day. So I was on a ride-along last week. Four of the five calls that we were, were homeless-related, and unfortunately, two of the, cops always go in twos, black and whites are always in pairs. They determined that these people were either harmful to themselves or to the public, so they had to drive to Olive Crest, all of you, and that took two cops, well, actually, two separate cops, four hours out of commission. There's only six cops typically, six, seven police, patrolling the area of all North Hollywood, which is 25 square miles, and you took two of them out because of this. Solution, yes, it is a problem, they need to be housed, but not in residential areas. My suggestion is we house them in industrial areas where there's no, at nighttime, you don't have the problems of break-ins and violent crimes committed. So, and then when you house them, that's only, it's like a stool. One of the problems is housing. The second problem is needing mental professionals there, because so many of them are ill. And the third is you got to get them job rehab, and you can put, like, a recyclamation plant or something, so that some of them can start, get back on their feet.
Thank you, Ron. Barry Johnson?
Hi, I'm Barry Johnson, Studio City Residents Association Vice President, and I'm also a board member of Studio City Beautification. And we are an offshoot of the Residents Association, and we beautified the 11220 address with plants and a walkway some years ago. That property was condemned after the 94 earthquake. Nothing can be built there, and even the portion that we beautified is only, like, within 15, 20 feet of Ventura. The rest of it's like a 45-degree angle up. I've been told already that there's no way the city is going to put anybody there. The reason it is on this list is because all the council members had to come up with addresses that were owned by the city in their council districts, and the two that are in the flatlands of Studio City were that and the parking garage. I can tell you right now, they are never going to put homeless there, because they will be looking out for the homeless and saying, "Oh, my God, if the dirt comes down in an earthquake, they'll be killed." So don't worry, they're not going to put them there. It's just on the list because we had to show our properties in Studio City. Regarding the parking structure, I've been told that its only use would be parking of cars, not campers, because of height restrictions between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., which is the ordinance that we are in right now for two years that will be ending June 30th. If you go online, you can see all over Los Angeles where these campers are allowed to park overnight between 9:00 and 6:00. They have to move after that. They are generally in industrial areas. My last recollection of the math in Studio City was we had virtually nowhere they could park in Studio City. Although, over the course of the two years, I don't think it's been well-enforced. I mean, it's only been enforced if people call it in. But I think the only thing we are facing is the possibility of cars being allowed to park in that parking structure between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and then being asked to leave at 6:00 a.m. Now, who polices that is another question. I don't know. There is a parking lot attendant that comes in in the morning, you know? So, but on the other hand, you know, Studio City maybe has to do its 2% part, and maybe that's our part with that parking structure. I don't know. That's yet to be determined. But anyway, as far as, again, the oasis that's been beautified, nothing's going to happen there. It's like Earth waiting to fall down, so.
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Lex Roman? Peter, is that spot on camera or only that spot?
It's a camera here. Fun. I'm Lex Roman. I've been a Studio City homeowner for 10 years, and as someone else mentioned, I've also seen homelessness increase in this area. According to LASSA, in the last homeless count, we have 1,000 homeless people in CD2, which includes us, obviously, North Hollywood, and I think Van Nuys as well. 1,000 people is a lot of people. 30% of those people are fleeing domestic violence, 10% are veterans. I mean, it's a large population, and it's our population. Also, according to LASSA, the majority of our homeless population in L.A. have lived in L.A. for over 10 years, which means that they're not being bussed in from out of town, that they lived here at one point. I don't think it's an option to not help this crisis. I don't think it's an option to push these services and housing to other neighborhoods. That's not working. I go to several neighborhood council meetings a month. The sentiment is the same at those meetings, "Don't put it here, put it in another neighborhood." If every neighborhood says that, we cannot put it anywhere. We, as voters, 80% of L.A. approved Measure HHH, which is to build permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is housing that includes supportive services on-site. So they have a live-in property manager that's there 24/7. They have mental health, they have rehab, they have veteran services, they have job training on-site for the residents. Those are operated by nonprofits, and they're getting our taxpayer dollars to do that. We can't build that housing that we all voted to set aside money for if we don't allow them to build in our neighborhoods. I wanted to mention one thing on the parking. There's an organization called Safe Parking LA. They manage parking lots for people who sleep in parking lots overnight. They have a security guard there the whole time. People, in order to be in a safe parking lot, you have to have current registration, a current license, you have to have a case manager through L.A. Family Housing in this area, and you have to be on a path to housing, and you have to renew the lease to be in that parking lot every month. So it's not an easy process, and it's not like an open free-for-all. There's actually a safe parking lot in North Hollywood, and it's not even at capacity. I think there's a couple people there. It can have 15 people sleeping there overnight, and they can't even get that many people in there because of all the restrictions. Same thing with supportive housing. People in supportive housing, and even in temporary housing, have responsibilities, and it's not easy to get spots in temporary housing.
I'm going to have to move on to the next one.
Oh, okay. I just want to say I'm fully in support of doing this in Studio City.
Thank you. Alex Isbicky?
Hi. I'm speaking as a resident, just want to make that clear. You know, this is just really strange. I'm a real estate agent, and obviously, we have a crisis here, and I just don't understand why our city can't just do things naturally and normally. We have an area in the valley, which is, say, Panorama City, which has tons of vacant properties that have been dilapidated and not occupied for, I'd say, Montgomery Ward about 35 years. And I just don't understand, these are places that are perfectly suited to help the homeless, not because they're in cheap rent or high rent, it's because, well, yeah, it's depressed there, and the cost there to rent a space is a lot cheaper than, say, here or Malibu or somewhere else. It just doesn't make any sense, and I can only see this as just a play for our councilmen to, again, grandstand and campaign, because basically, if I were in charge, I would say, "Well, let's look at the map. Where can we put them? Let's put them here," and stop with all of this politicizing and trying to just garner a favor for the next political position we want. So what I would just ask our council office, and I'd just ask all the councilmen and women, to get down to business, take care of this, get these people housed, get them off the streets and protected, but stop playing politics. This is about finding a place that will be suitable for them, and at the lowest cost, because guess what? We pay for all of this. And as taxpayers, just because it's not their money doesn't mean that they don't have to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Fred Newman?
Well, I've lived in Los Angeles, Santa Monica, and Studio City, and I've seen over the past years the proliferation of homelessness, it's overwhelming. Everybody's talking about it tonight. But the detail I want to talk about is this issue with mobile homes, RVs. Over the past year or so, all over the city, you see more and more of them parked on curbs, in parking lots, in neighborhoods. I saw one ironically on Laurel Canyon the other day, it was an oxymoron. It was a mobile home someone had been living in for a long time, parked, and this is on the other side of Mulholland, on the west side of town, with the Denver boot on it. Now, it's not going to be hauled away for months, so that person could just continue to live in there, the Denver boot means nothing. So my point is this, and it goes over to what you said. Neighborhoods, people who live in homes, condos, rent apartments, or whatever, don't want to live next to an RV camp. That's not what they bought their homes for or moved to an apartment for. Those parking structures, by the way, RVs don't fit in parking structures. They're talking about cars for that. But parking lots for mobile homes should be in industrial areas, and that's what you were talking about earlier. Industrial areas, they're usually empty at night, they're not around housing, you don't have to worry about transient people. And the other thing is this to be careful of, because people who live in mobile homes, whether they're five years old or 50 years old, as long as they're plated, registered, can say, "I'm not homeless, I'm living in a mobile home." So they can separate themselves from this whole thing, and then it becomes a whole legal harangue, dealing with a whole other category. But the bottom line is, don't let the city put, give parking areas in Studio City for RVs and mobile homes. That's insane. Put them in industrial areas, and the politicians need to know that.
(applause).
If there's any, some people came in a little later. Right now, he's the final speaker card I have, so if there's additional speaker cards, I think the last two were given out, or just raise your hand. So we'll finish these, and then we'll go around quickly.
So I'm Jeffrey Goddard, and I've been a resident of Studio City since 2001. Homeowner very close to Ventura Boulevard. In fact, right behind the Starbucks and Pier 1 Imports, that big parking lot just right over the hill. So we get our full of it. People are throwing trash over the wall, thinking that, you know, for not realizing there's a house right over the wall and right on the sidewalk whenever we, my, any of, my wife, myself, or any of our six kids go for walks to go buy some ice cream or something, usually, we see two or three homeless and some of them screaming profanities at us. Today, my wife and I visited a couple of dozen shops and restaurants between Witsit and Laurel Canyon. We talked to the managers, and without exaggeration, everyone we talked to, when they heard about the, and it's amazing, they didn't seem to know much about these proposed shelters. It was a shock to them. So we passed out, we created letters explaining our personal views, having observed the deterioration for the last 20 years, in just recent years especially, how bad it's gotten. When we walked to Bookstar, that little passageway between the parking lot and Bookstar, urination and defecation, and some of the managers said, "Right in the store, they're pooping and urinating, in the store." And one store owner said she has to spend $48,000 a year for security guard, which can make or break a small mom and pop that have invested their life savings. You know what kind of turnover we have? You see store after store going out of business, and that alone is enough to put them over the edge. So speaking in behalf of these two dozen store owners that we talked to in restaurants, and some horror stories, you know that store where they sell vintage posters and movie, you know, old photographs that are framed? That lady's been in there for 24 years. She said recently she was knifed by a homeless person, knifed, and had to call the police, and it took them 45 minutes to arrive. So, and you heard about that horrible thing that happened in Ventura County? A man in the restaurant, right in front of his daughter and wife, got killed by a homeless. So, you know, I recognize that there needs to be advocates for the homeless, but I, as I did some research, Utah continues to be put out there as a, one of the states that has the lowest population in the last 10 years. They've, I've seen some numbers that say 91%, they've decreased their homeless population through certain measures, and I won't take the time to go into them, but Google Utah homeless, and you'll see article after article about how they address their homeless situation. And so I would really hope that we could be mindful of the store owners and homeowners that are right close to the Boulevard there especially, and this is very alarming, father of six kids, and all of my kids are either going to Carpenter right now, or Campbell Hall, or Walter Reed, and I, we worked hard to afford a place that's safe for our children, our families.
Jeffrey, do you have a last point to make?
And the last point is, remembering the good old days when vagrancy and home intoxication, public intoxication, vagrancy, it was against the law. And they would put them either in workhouses or on the roads, so it made it so unpleasant that they dried out, and they, I know it sounds very old-fashioned, and all, but they dried up, and they, it became so intolerable that they realized they've hit rock bottom, and they, they're motivated to clean up their act, because they don't have cushy, you know, handouts. It, you know, it was, there was more expected of them, and self-esteem comes from, you know, there's two cities that are paying homeless to clean up the streets, so there's some self-esteem from work, and that gets their act together. They don't just become dependent on handouts. Sorry to go over.
Thank you. Rachel Spalding?
Sorry for being late, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I didn't want to rehash a point that maybe was made before, but I was told it hadn't been sort of pointed out very much. I would just like to say for me, and as a mom of three here in Studio City, I've done a lot of research, because I want to be sending the right message to my kids about the homeless, I want to model the proper values, it's very important to me. But I also have certain opinions, especially, my husband and I both come from families with a lot of drug and alcohol abuse. So, you know, we have a house full of recovery that we don't, we're not in favor of pot shops on every corner and stuff like that. That's stuff that's really impacted our families. So perhaps we bring with it a certain opinion or bias beforehand. But I guess what I wanted to say is, having done all this research, what I, I've talked to the PATH team in downtown L.A. with the police, I've talked to our senior lead officer, Sean Smith, several times. I've, myself, gone to L.A. Family Housing. I've looked into what opportunities my kids could do this summer, and I've come up with some, you know, interesting statistics that don't seem to be jiving with what I'm understanding from Councilman Krikorian's office. Most of these families, most people who, for instance, he talked so much in that sheet of paper about mothers and kids coming to this homeless shelter that I was seeing, that's not the population that we have mainly in Studio City. And I've checked that with L.A. Family Housing, who said if they, if there is a family and they're willing to abide by the rules and come on in, they can usually get them a bed within one day. And then within the past year, my family and I were able to not really help or do anything, but at least assist and make sure that a homeless mom with two kids that was at the Ventura and Vineland Ralphs got into L.A. Family Housing. And I actually, she had said, you know, "Please check on me," and I called, and I And I called and I checked on her, they said she's here, she's doing great, and that took two days. So what I wanted to say is, I just feel that sometimes there is a trigger reaction of not understanding the issues that surround homelessness. It's very complicated, it's rarely as simple, it's a mom and the shelter will just be moms and kids. That's not what my research has shown me. And then, really, the point B that I would like to say is that until, because of my research, I've also had talks, numerous talks with the LAPD, who all are very displeased with the lack of policing resources that we have in Studio City and North Hollywood. They have personally told me that they are based on population metrics, I know you guys all know this, that reflect the valley closer to the 1960s. So that's the policing we have. My senior lead officer has said, if anything, short of anything really, really, really serious happens on your block, I will not be able to come, I will not be able to help you with somebody doing drugs on the sidewalk right by your house, that I can't help you with. That there was a really bad dispute and your neighbor was kind of like almost scary, he was giving me examples, I can't probably help you, I'm so sorry. He said, I'd like to be able to help you. So that led me to call Councilman Krikorian's office previously, who said, well, we haven't been able to get those resources from the city. And it's like, what is this going to take? And I don't hear a commitment on Krikorian's office or Krikorian's part to get us the proper policing. Until we have the proper policing, this is not a conversation that we should be having. And frankly, I'm really angry that this is not a, that this is not already understood. Then you have people saying, well, you must be someone that doesn't want to help people. No, this is absolute logic. Until we have proper policing resources here, there is no business adding transitional or homeless shelters or anything else. And what is it going to take? I called, so I've called Krikorian's office, I've called downtown, and what I've gotten is, yeah, that's not going to happen. That's not going to happen. This, whose city is this? So I would really very much like to know, in this kind of cycle of not being able to do anything, what's going to happen? I mean, the people of the city, the taxpayers, we have, I guess, no say? I was also told very specifically, oh, thank you. I was also told very specifically that Krikorian may not be very open to input from us because this is a top agenda item. So again, this leads to the question of, whose city is this? Is this Krikorian city? Is this Garcetti city? Or is this our city? And this is one that's really gotten me, you know what I mean? As a mom of three, living in the city, so thank you very much.
Any additional brief comments? Peter?
Hi, it's sort of an umbrella over the topic you're talking about, but it's related. So, speaking to your comments about how the mental illness and drug addiction for homeless, there was a representative from the mayor's office at the last Studio City board meeting that said 70, 75% of the homeless are, I think it was a quote, "just like you and me." And it was not, was not, and I can give everybody the link to watch the video, because that's what I do. So, it's, I noticed that LAPD and the mayor's office are diametrically opposed in their messaging as to what the issue is. I contacted Meg Barkley, who is the HHH homeless coordinator, and this is, she's overseeing the $1.2 billion measure, how the money is spent. And my personal passion is transparency and I got involved a few years ago. There was a project in my neighborhood and it lacked transparency and I take my skills in audio and video and I try to make sure that the rest of the community can see videos on hot-button topics that are important to all of us. So I asked, where can I see the, specifically, I was looking for the HHH administrative oversight committee meetings and the citizen oversight committee meetings, the recordings for this. And there are no videos and there are 14 that I was given. Two of them were recorded so you could actually hear them, the rest of them were on an iPhone off in the corner. $1.2 billion bond measure, oversight committees happening in the dark. So, if you want to see an LA City Council meeting, you can go on their website, Granicus, you can watch the video, you can do a keyword search, it'll queue the video there. I don't understand why something that costs so much is in the dark. Last thing, I believe it was Ron Galperin, and I've heard this number mentioned a few times, that the housing that they want to build costs between $400,000 and $600,000 per unit.
Thank you, Peter. We will move on to a vote if, yeah, ma'am, you had a comment? Yeah, go ahead, quickly.
I wanted to have a proposal. I see that we all work very diligently and hard to have our goals and live in a clean, safe place and residence and, because the city is very well goal-oriented, it's not cheap to live here. And for, to allow people who obviously have a need to, for wellness, maybe they need a shower and food and a purpose and education to develop skills to maintain and sustain a job, it's important for their needs, but I think in our city, it doesn't mix well with what we've created here in Studio City, Toluca Lake. It's very important to give them a place to stay, have a place to sleep, where they could be safe with maybe a security, a lock cabinet for their valuables, that gives them a place to have a shower and food and the medical attention they need away from this community would be best. Maybe where all of them are sent to and where if they get financial aid, the financial aid is forfeited to the facility. And if they want their freedom that we've all worked so hard for, they get to earn it and have pride in earning it. So they will be given, allowed to attend a course that allows to facilitate them back into the community for those maybe 20% who are eligible for that. And for the other people, they will stay and maintain and get their health care until they are able to facilitate. But by, I don't know if they get financial aid, I'm not familiar with it, but if they do get money and stuff, they just buy drugs and alcohol and it just, they're not rehabbable. So they need the ability to rehab, where they're able to get sleep, nutrition, so they can function better. But it's not fair for them because they're ill, they need medical attention, they wander, they're passed out on streets. I saw one about to burn himself up. And all the resources for city police officers are being used to police these people instead of keeping our safes clear. Is that what we do? Our city dollars are all around the homeless. And it's not fair to them because they need attention, but they're getting neglected because we pay taxes and deserve our protection as well. So.
Thank you. Your name, please.
John Gordon.
And your name, ma'am?
Nicole Bradshaw.
Thank you.
I'm sort of a CBS cameraman. I know a local story when I see one that's important. I don't know why there's no, why is there no coverage here? I mean, we're on the lot of CBS and Channel 1. Why, whose responsibility is it? A call to a newsroom would probably have brought some cameras out here. Like that, who's taking care of the publicity for us here? Is it, I respectfully ask you, is it your responsibility? Do you need some help?
Once again, this is your comment time.
We need, okay.
How do we get the answer?
We need to get coverage here.
They are covering a similar story in Koreatown tonight.
At least, you know, that's been pushed through already.
That's good to know.
Today, 1,000 people were on the wheelchair, it was traffic.
It's very sad.
1,000 people were on the wheelchair today.
Protesting?
Yes, protesting.
Okay. So we're going to move on to vote now. First, the committee members have a moment to make a comment, address anything that was said.
I'm not a true member of the committee.
You're not a committee member. Patrice, anything you want to add before we vote?
Just that I'm in total agreement. I live with it every day myself, I've lived here all my life, so.
Marcia?
Well, I would say that our committee is working on a proposal explaining the dire need to expand the police presence in our community. And that is part and parcel of dealing with the problem that we have, dealing with the transient community. And I think that's step one, that we have to be very aggressive and I think we have to have a protest at City Hall as a community and we have to, maybe we should have one of our Public Safety Committee meetings there. Because they could see, this is a huge turnout for this, for a small burg, someone called it a burg, it's a village. This is a catastrophe and I think we should consider that.
Thank you, Marcia.
I just want to remind you that this motion is specifically for these two properties, so we're not addressing all of the comments, which we will be addressing and we feel behind and understand all of the opinions. So that's what we're going to be voting on now, is just the, this small port, part of these two addresses.
Do you think we should extend it to all Studio Cities?
No, we're repositioning the motion as we speak, based on some input tonight. And again, it's just, it's just the first step that we're making tonight. There will be many more discussions and hopefully, the same number of people will attend or more.
Yeah. So, well, right now, the sentence is, Studio City Neighborhood Council is strongly opposed to any review, assessment, and/or development of the properties located at 11220 Ventura Boulevard, 12225 Ventura Boulevard, and any additional location in Studio City, make it a little broader language.
Something wrong with the address there.
Excuse me, for clarification, isn't it 12220?
Yeah, the address is wrong.
I keep seeing the backslash and I just thought you may want to address it.
I have the.
It's across the street from each other now?
No. In the original motion, in the original council motion, it's 11220 Ventura Boulevard and 12225 Ventura Boulevard from Krikorian.
Okay.
All right. So, we're going to vote, vote on it with that friendly amendment.
And they're over a mile apart.
So, yes. So, three votes to pass and then we'll move on to the Studio City Neighborhood Council full board. We'll go down. Marcia? A yes says you're strongly opposed, a no is the opposite.
Yes. I'm opposed.
Patrice Berlin? Patty Kirby?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, there you have it, 4-0, and we'll move on to the full board. Yeah, so the next Studio City Council full board meeting.
When is that?
I'm going to pull it up so I give you the exact date. Like I said, it's the third Wednesday of every month, so it will be on June 20th and this will be on that agenda to weigh in. And thank you for coming out tonight. There are other agenda items, including fireworks, but I do understand if you have to get going.